We have the city council meeting scheduled for 2:25 will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Hoag.
Here.
Councilor Koevenen.
Here.
Councilor Lilis.
Here.
Councilor Hadrava.
Here.
Mayor Visolovic.
Here. Approval of minutes, city council workshop, June 27th, city council workshop, July 5th, city council meeting, July 5th, and city council workshop, July 20th. We don't have any changes or additions, gonna call for a motion that we approve these minutes.
So move.
Motion made by Lilis, Travis, support.
Support.
Support by Koevenen, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda. There's really no other changes, Jackie, other than that number eight, you've changed the price.
And I would request that you take number nine off.
Number nine, okay.
Yep. Doug and I are still working on that.
Oh, okay. Was there any other changes or additions? If not, call for motion that we approve tonight's agenda with these deletions and changes. Side of me. Motion made by Hoag, do I have support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. We don't have any appointments or presentations tonight. Anybody from the audience wish to address the city council at this time? We'll all five minutes, if not, I will give time at the end of the meeting. Next item, consent agenda, approval of payroll, June 16th through the 30th, approval of payroll, July 5th through the 15th, approval of claims for July. Number four, authorize Mayor Visolovic to sign grant offer for airport improvement program, project for Evlith, Virginia Municipal Airport. Number five, cooperative agreement between St. Louis County and City of Evlith for sidewalk repairs for 2016 and 2017. And number six, community block grant development program fiscal year 2016 agreement between St. Louis County and the City of Evlith. Anybody have any questions on any of these items? If not, can I call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that move.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Koevenen, any further discussion? Is that the, Jerry, is that the sidewalk program with the county, that one, or?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. Great, great program, thanks to the St. Louis County Board, gave us an extra $10,000 for sidewalks on the county state aid streets in Evlith.
Was that, that airport improvement program, does that include like the hangars?
Is that what that was, or?
I think so.
This block grant program, or?
No, the airport improvement program.
Um, there's a whole series of projects that are outlined in that airport improvement listing that I hand out for meeting, but yes, this IRRB application is for hangars and the relative site improvements for hangars at the airport and the Sky Harbor. And that is a 90% funded by the state federal, it has a 10% vote to match, and the IRRB, the airport authority is looking to apply for assistance to the IRRB to help fund that 10%.
Okay, thank you.
And there's a, hey, now, there's a, there's a waiting list of 11 people that need and want hangars, and it is a source of income for the airport authority, that's why they're anxious to try and get some.
All right, thank you.
Well, it's nice the airport authority is, you know, taking the initiative and getting on top of this stuff to increase business there. Do we have a motion and a support on that stat?
Do you have a motion you have a support?
Oh, we had a, I had a motion and a support, okay, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item, no unfinished business, no public hearings, J1, new business, estimate from North Country heating, cooling, and refrigeration for furnace and air conditioner for the fire hall. Is this the only one we really had?
Yeah, and as you know, Chief Hawes is pretty frugal, so when he selects somebody to get a quote from, he's certain that they're good and fair and they've done work for us in the past.
I see that this is extremely good value for what we're getting, and I would make the motion to accept the bid.
I have a motion from Councilor Lilis, do I have a support?
I'd support it too, if, wish you we could get some up here.
We're gonna talk about that later. On the meeting before we meet.
I'll support.
Support by Koevenen, well, you know, you got a pretty reputable company here anyway, giving you the quote.
Yeah, I think this is.
They do a lot of work.
I think they need this up there, they have personnel that are sleeping up there and...
Yeah, I mean, they do a good job.
And they have a lot, you know, they have meetings for twice a week, once a week up there, and so they definitely need it.
Any further discussion?
There's definitely an efficiency issue as well.
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's gonna keep some costs down.
Well, just that stuff gets old and wore out, that's...
And it's really not that bad of a price when you consider what air conditioners are nowadays, and furnaces and...
Any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Memorandum of understanding between City of Evlith and City of Virginia, or City of Virginia 2016 natural gas line project. Man, we got all kind of paperwork, three different motions on this one though. What is this part now? Just the basic?
This looks very...
Mayor, councilors, this one is the underlying memorandum of understanding which essentially establishes that Evlith is gonna get the benefit of declaring of the 66-foot wide strip at Virginia's cost in exchange for not charging individually for the other easements for the gas pipeline easements, or for the town border.
Town border.
Station easement, which are the other two, uh, motion items there. The memorandum of understanding also does include still, doesn't it, the requirement that Virginia pay, what, $4,000? Yeah. $4,000 to the city to offset staff time, Rod's time, my time, and other costs that have been incurred in the process of negotiation of this. And Jackie's probably more up to date on exactly what other issues might be related to that.
Well, this, so where's this easement exactly going to now?
So, this is the MOU, which is separate from the easements, but sort of inclusive, so we want you to approve this, and then Virginia needs to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay? And then the easements are for the area south of Highway 37 across from Masabi Station, there's currently a gas town border station, so we're gonna give them an easement to build another TBS town border station, where Northern Natural Gas will make the connection there, and then the City of Virginia, through their contractor, will directional drill or bore underneath the highway and underneath the wetlands and within that property, on the western edge of the property, we're gonna buy, which is on your agenda tonight, okay? So we're giving them an easement to be on city property. And the one easement, which is north of Highway 37, okay, that 66 feet, is they're gonna clear 66 feet for us, and this agreement gives them a timeline in which to do it and guarantees it gets done.
That's gonna be the future frontage road extension?
Yes.
From 44 Station will connect to the Super A. Originally, we talked about, we're gonna build us a road there, because we wanted the pipeline going there, obviously, like they did, but it was getting a little problem with all the environmental issues, they're still time consuming, so we thought, if they just clear that path for us, we got that part of it done, and let it go, because they did a lot of the paperwork, and through time, that stuff will kind of cure itself, but right now, there's a time constraint here. And no one else has any questions, call for a motion that we approve item number two? Memorandum of understanding between City of Evlith and the City of Virginia?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hoag, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number three, easement convenance of land and...
Do you want another explanation?
Man, I'd hate to buy anything from a city anymore, I'll tell you that, look at the paper.
So Mayor, if, when you folks approve these two easements, can you approve them contingent on the City of Virginia signing this agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, just to speed it up.
No, what it, what it does is it, it forces, I'll use that word, okay, it forces them to agree to this, which means they're gonna clear it, they're gonna pay the admin fee in exchange for the mayor and I signing these two easements.
Oh, okay.
It assures the clearing gets done.
The road thing was their idea, and I thought it was a real good one, you know, because now it keeps the gas line in a roadway, it doesn't obstruct any other property in the area out there, there's not a lot of overburden, they couldn't get it deep enough, and we didn't want it to go the one way, so it kind of works out, they brought it up, Jerry and I were talking to him, and I thought it was a great idea, because we want a road eventually there anyway, and then you could use it for a trail until it gets built for a road, initially.
And then, Mayor, the easement for that pipeline area specifically mentions that that's the intention of the City of Evlith, and so as they put in their pipelines, they're supposed to do it in a way that would minimize the potential for a conflict when the city decides to build the roadway, so putting it right on the edge of the right away, rather than when there was ditching or...
Down the middle or something.
Something, the, in conflict between the two uses.
You know, the whole process makes, it made a lot of common sense between Virginia and us, because like you say, it doesn't give somebody a headache down the road, you wanna build something there 10, 15 years from now, all that's been taken into consideration, you know, it's laid out for future development, which is a good combination.
No, this sounds, I know we talked in the past that there would be, there would be a gravel road, complete road, when it's all said and done, right? Or is it just gonna be the road bed?
No, it's just gonna be a clearing, because there's a number of environmental issues, and they take so much time, and they've gotta have this line, I think, going by the end of September, because they did all the paperwork for the environmental stuff, but there, there's a time span.
I just wanted to clarify, because I know we had different discussions on this in the past.
So right now, they're just gonna clear, they're not gonna...
They're gonna clear it.
They're just gonna clear it, on the ground level.
Yeah, so as...
And we'll be able to make it work after that.
As the work they did, those applications hit their time mark, then you can start doing something, it's months down the road, that's, that's the trouble, you know, you got a little overregulation.
I mean, that's doing us a pretty big favor, I think, and I appreciate that.
It's a...
Getting it cleared and getting it organized ready for us to vote.
And it was done, you know, smart, between the both of us, it leaves that area right ripe for development at some time, there's no problems, it works. Call for a motion that we approve item three, contingent on approval of item two, City of Virginia?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Now we got another, Doug, give us number four now, tell me about this one.
Well, this is, this is the second easement area that's contemplated in the memorandum of understanding, and it's specifically for a very small parcel for this town border station that would be on the east side.
Yeah, okay.
On the highway, and it's not actually connected to the other easement, there's an area there which they need to get, have easement from the city, so it's a standalone town border station to, as I understand it, and Jackie can correct me, to step down essentially the pressure that comes in on the major feed line, so that it's at a level that can be used in residential and business heating.
See, they had, they had wetland issues over there now, too, they had to deal with. I mean, there was a swamp and, you know, 50 gallons of water.
It looks all, all rock and mountains, but boy, there's a lot of land in between somewhere.
Every, every dip and wet spot, I mean, that's, it's taking so much time, because there's a few, and all these permits and things they applied for, it takes, you know, a bunch of time for them. Who knows, we might have the green people out there licking.
Don't bring that up.
Uh, yeah, don't bring that up.
Don't you mention that.
We'll follow the procedure and get it done right.
If there's no other question, call for a motion that we approve item four?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I got a support?
Hold on.
Contingent upon their...
This one too, you want a contingent?
Yes.
Okay. This'll also be contingent upon approval of item two.
Yes.
Hold.
And I'll still make that motion.
You amended your motion, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion?
No one else?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number five, purchase agreement for vacant land adjacent to 1809 Station 44 Road. See this, guys? You don't take much to spend money now.
You know, the, the thing I like about this is that we have the property, that they were very easy to deal with, and I would just like to say thank you to them and wish him the best luck, because he has a little illness that's with him, so just let know our thoughts are there, and thank you for selling it to us, because we can use that property.
Well, it's nice it borders right on this right away, Virginia's gonna clear.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's all falling into place, it worked out very well.
Yes.
And they were real easy to deal with, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions? And the price is $10,000 for five acres.
Well, that's gonna put an end to, well, a start, let's put it that way, not necessarily an end to a battle, but a start to our, to finish our road.
That's right.
And our other projects that we've been trying to get through for a long time.
We're gonna have land available on that road, if somebody's interested in doing something.
So...
Any further discussion? Can I have a motion that we purchased this property for $10,000?
I'll make the, I'll support it.
Support.
Well, I just, we, we got it, so.
Motion made by Hadrava, support by Koevenen.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Couldn't sneak that in.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That was a long time coming.
It was.
You know, it really, it went pretty smooth.
Very, it went very smooth.
Start talking about that string.
Considering where do they live, Colorado, Wyoming?
Yeah, we've been looking at different ideas and different thoughts of how to get back there, and how to do this, and how to do that, and once this came to light, we can, and asked them, and they, they agreed to us, so that's fantastic, and I, again, like sleeves would say, thank you very much for selling it to us.
Item number six, authorized benchmark engineering to call for bids for storm sewer replacement on the 200 block of Garfield Street. Have a motion that we have benchmark call for bids?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Koevenen, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number seven, pay request number two from Joel and Sop Excavating, the amount of $74,519.20 for Pierce Street sanitary sewer improvement projects. Looks like that one's all buttoned up, Jerry, on a project?
It's not quite done yet, they still have to do the paving down on the fail road.
Oh, okay.
Project, and also some cleanup, and a little more work on restoring the landscape up on Pierce.
I see there's some...
But the pipe is all in.
I see there's new curbing they replaced the things there too already.
Yep. Yep.
If nobody has any questions, can I call for a motion that we approve pay request number two for Joel and Sop? Also, a motion made by Koevenen, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Lilis, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, pay request for 3D concrete and construction, the amount of $19,942.27, that's the right amount there, Jackie? This is off of this second sheet?
Yes.
For the Veterans Park, Edel Lake Pavilion roof replacement.
That also has been a long time coming, we've been working on that for quite a few years, so we know it needed it, we just couldn't quite get it there, and now we've found the money and we, we're gonna finish this, and...
And you know, when you, you go out there and you stand outside of the pavilion, and you really don't realize how big it is, until, you know, you do a project like this, and I think the project came in at a pretty good price, and this thing will outlast our lifetime.
Well, how long has the last one been on?
Forever.
It'll be here another hundred years anyway, so...
You know, and it's a piece of property that the city will always have, and it's something that they gotta take care of.
You know, it's, I've never seen the amount of compliments you get on that park, they go out of their way to stop at the city hall, and tell you what a nice place it is.
Well, you go out there now, on just about any given day, it's just like, remember the old Slav picnic days? You see people flying around, running around, they're barbecuing, they're having fun, and that's, we had where it was idle for, you know, five to 10 years, and now it's nice to see it back to being used. I mean, you have waiting lines for people to go out there, and it's just nice to see. Hopefully, in the future, we can do some stuff about some boats, and, and I know it's all in the works, but it all takes time.
Well, it does, it takes time, you know, as long as you keep moving forward.
Yeah.
No one has any questions, can I call for a motion that we approve the pay request from 3D concrete and construction?
So...
Motion made by Hoag, do I have a support?
And this is just the first payment?
Yes, pay request one.
And I'll second it.
Second by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. And we pulled number nine off the agenda, we'll go to number 10. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance opting out of the requirements of Minnesota statute, 462.3593, temporary healthcare dwellings. Call for a motion that we approve the first reading? Do we need another one after this? One more timer.
Yes, Stephanie will publish it in the paper, and then you'll do the second and final reading.
Okay.
So move.
Motion made by Lilis, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number 12, or 11, resolution authorizing the city to make application to and accept funds from the IRRB Development Infrastructure Grant Program for the Evlith, Virginia Airport.
Our airport's looking pretty shabby, it needs, it needs some help, and this is the start of our projects, right, Rod?
Good.
Okay. So with that, I'll be making that motion also.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Koevenen, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number 12, resolution authorizing the City of Evlith to make application to and accept funds from the IRRB Commercial Redevelopment Grant Program for demolition of commercial We are gonna make application, we gotta fine tune it yet, I think, eh? So, we don't wanna get, like I told you, start chasing the school bus down the road, we'll make sure we get in, and I will so move, since I remember that conversation rather well. Motion made by Koevenen, do I have a support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava, and for the audience's information, the two buildings are the former Bill's Audio and Tunas, two structures we're talking about, we've got a few different ideas we've been talking about here, we have to finalize, but any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item 13, renewal application for optional 2A.M. liquor license for Sue's penalty box. All these come to at different times of the year, don't they?
The 2A.M.
Oh, okay.
2A.M., I've been sleeping for four hours by now.
Boy, you're getting old.
I have a motion that we approve this liquor license.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadrava, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. That takes care of our new business tonight, does anybody on the council have any updates on anything?
Our EDA meeting has been postponed and repostoned, so we're waiting for that to happen, but one, one item that I want to, if I may.
Absolutely.
Just for the public's concern, today's National Night Out Day, and for those of you that aren't familiar with what that is, the first Tuesday, I think historically, in August for the last several years, a national, a nationwide program called National Night Out has been occurring in communities across the United States, and that simply, or that was developed to promote crime prevention in neighborhoods. Evlith is participating, oh, many of you may have heard already, so I just wanna remind everyone that there will be a gathering at the Leonidas Community Center in Leonidas from 4:00 to 6:00 P.M., and another gathering at the Veterans Lake Park from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M., and there is an assortment of different things for the kids, and, and there's gonna be a, a bunch of our municipal emergency equipment on hand, so you can take a look at that and take tours of different things, a bunch of our city staff, and as well as Dona Field staff, so, and I believe Life Flight Helicopter's gonna be coming in to the Veterans Lake Park later this afternoon, Chief can probably elaborate on that a little bit further, so I, but I just wanna encourage everyone to, to please take the time to come on out, it's a good time, it's a good chance to, to see people that you may not have had an opportunity to speak with for a while, and the kids sure have a good time, so please, please come on out.
Brad, you have anything? What, you're gonna bring up one item?
Was I?
Yeah.
Which one?
AC.
Oh, yeah.
We're waiting.
I'm, I'm, been here six years now, and our chambers is actually disgraceful to hold a meeting in, it is so hot here in the summer, we have a lot of meetings here during the week, our mayor's office, our council office, I recommend that we look into getting air conditioning to have at least some decent temperatures there to deal with the public health.
I would, I would probably agree with you, and I think maybe we should talk to the ones that are putting air conditioning up in the fire hall, and, and maybe he could come down here and talk with Jackie, or talk with yourself, since you're like a fine connoisseur with the air conditioning, way more than I know about it, and maybe you can have a conversation with them and tell them what we want, and maybe get a appraisal or something.
I would like to do, I would do that, I, I definitely see the need here really bad, but I also don't wanna spend an arm and a leg, and I sure don't wanna ruin the architecture of our building.
That's why I think you would be perfect for this job.
You got a good way of designating people for jobs.
I stand behind them, but you know, I stand behind them in theory, but when it comes to plugging stuff in and telling if it works, you can ask my brother, I have no idea what I'm talking about, so I bow to Bradley and let him take it from here.
Well, you know, there, there's a lot that goes on, especially in this room, commission meeting.
Yes.
Staff has meetings, you get state people come in for different things, and county interviews, I mean, there's a lot that goes on.
And you can't tell now, we're all sweaty.
I was gonna say, it might be a little bit cheaper to dispense towels and soap.
We got a dress code here, so.
Thank God.
Joe, you have anything to bring up?
No, it's beginning of August, and, you know, kids will be going back to school pretty quick, that's sure sign of the winter coming, drive safely, and, and everybody, including the dogs, and everybody with this nice weather are kinda bucky out there, so just keep an eye, and we don't have much time left, we know it's coming, so it's been a good summer, and...
We dodged a lot of real bad weather.
Oh, have we ever.
We were really lucky.
We have a lot more wetlands right now.
Yes.
Don't say that.
Brian, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, we had a TRA meeting a couple weeks ago, and I left my notes in the truck, but Bill, maybe you can help refresh my memory.
You were there.
We got a few projects going on up there, new furnaces, I think that's completed now. Sump pumps, we got new sump pumps put in the buildings, and metered, are working on that. Cameras, doing cameras for, you know, protection of the residents. What am I missing?
Painting a mix through your doors.
Oh, yes. So there's actually a lot going on up there, and they're actually doing very well for themselves right now.
Well, you know.
Very, very good board up there.
You know what I found out, I was on it for many years, and I think Bradley was on it, if I'm not mistaken, and they spend a lot of money up there to keep the place nice, but it's one of them places that after you get done fixing everything, you have to start all over and fix them again, whether it be furnaces, or washers, or stoves, I mean, they wear out, and it's just a constant turnaround, and that's why the board right now is keeping it looking good up there, and good turnaround of people, so good job.
Well, I think what we're doing is making the best in the product.
Yeah.
The environment, and I think furnaces, sump pumps, little things, we've even purchased flowers for people to plant, cans, property, those type of ones, so look by little there's encouragement there, hey, this is your environment, you can participate and make it as nice as you want, and we're giving them that incentive, and I'm very happy we have management to guide us, getting a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from Minnesota.
MHA?
Yes, for the furnaces, uh, so we got very highly efficient.
Have, have you guys looked into solar energy? We got a new plant in Virginia, or I mean, Mount Air.
Oh, boy.
Bradley, I haven't gotten that part.
Okay.
Don't get me going on that one.
But otherwise, I think things are going good up there, I think we got a great board, they're doing a good job, I think, maybe down the road, we gotta work on our roads up there, our streets around there, they're getting a little rough, but we'll work on that down the road.
Yeah, we will be talking to you, okay?
Well, any of that money you do up there, that's, you know, federal state money, it just gets pumped back in the local economy.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, it's, gets spent here somehow, it helps the local businesses and makes life a little better for some people, that's kinda what it's all about.
And it's, they're one unit short of a hundred percent occupancy as of last meeting, or they were a hundred percent, so they're full.
Jackie, do we ever get a price from a county on a three point nine five acres or five nine acres that we got up behind five seasons yet?
They've not provided me a price yet.
And I've got an update, I checked with the county engineer, top, and one oh one is going to get done from Grant Ave next year to number seven.
Get out.
I went and told him because I said, if it doesn't get done, Commissioner Nelson and I are in a lot of trouble.
Can you do something with the train track crossings?
He said they're gonna bid it this fall or this spring, and I think they did all the surveying they have to do on it, so yeah, that project is go right from Grant Ave right through.
Well, they should just put stop signs at them train tracks, they're so terrible.
They completely remodeled the Four Corners, uh, lights already, and I believe they did a lot on the tracks, so they have the one other set to do some stuff yet on the first set of tracks there, but yeah, I, I think they're, they're planning on, uh, beefing that up, so it's not quite so bad.
Well, good.
I, I had, I had someone contact me this past week, asked them when we were gonna redo that road, I go, well, it's not us.
I towed my trailer there last week, and I swore I would never go down that road again.
Well, you know, I, you know, I appreciate the residents out there being patient.
Yes.
They've asked, and they, they've been really nice waiting for it, and I think their patience is gonna be repaid now, this year, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be a pain like every construction job, traffic, but the benefits are gonna be just great when that's done, because that's a heavily traveled road.
Oh, you bet it is.
I believe, uh, county has helped the city with just about every casual road we have, uh, getting an overlay or getting it rebuilt, so.
County's got some good programs.
They've been doing some good help, good work for us, and appreciate it.
Especially with the tax forfeit buildings and things, uh, there you wanna get more of a partnership with the communities that the buildings are in, because they have the same problems that we do, it's kinda nice to see them getting involved in this in a larger way. But that's about built.
I forgot one thing, and that is, because we bought the furnaces, we will be getting fifteen K remade back, and I believe that's through A O A, if I'm not mistaken. So we're, we haven't decided yet how we're gonna inject that into the project.
Patch the streets.
But we'll be, we'll be talking to you about the streets, no curb, we've got our
Well, that's why we kind of doubled our efforts on the curbing, so we can get ahead of the game here, because it takes a beating with these winters we've been having.
And maybe there can be a reduced curve, not a B six eighteen, you know, which can, uh, over time, the power will kinda faggy it up a little bit, with a reduced curve, it'll be less wear and tear, but this is probably.
And is the auditorium gonna be ready to vote in there, Jackie?
Yes.
I don't even wanna go look in there yet, is it safe?
Oh, it's, look, Public Works did a really great job cleaning, um, taking a lot of items out of there, and it's gonna be cleaned tomorrow, and Stephanie and Jackie will be there on Thursday and Monday, and it'll be good to go for the primary.
Well, how's our, our last, uh, process coming on there, are we, it's gonna be done by next summer early?
So, we're getting close to, um, hopefully, I hate to tell you, we're probably gonna have another meeting in August, we have a lot of things to do, including hopefully call for the bids on the projects, and I just told Mark Worton today that I have a group that wants to use it in April, and they need to get there in April and have an event on May fourth, it's a concert, okay, that Bob Kivala and Roger Chiefer are working on, and so I said to Mark Worton, well, I want it done February first, knowing that I need a couple weeks' leave, so he said that should be doable, so keep your fingers crossed, I'll stay on it.
I had a phone call for somebody who wanted to, uh, go in and take a look around, and I informed him that I do have a key and we can do that, they'd like to have it for a wedding next July, and so that's, people are already starting to really chomping the bids and really would like to have it.
I know it's hard to get there.
Well, I know we've been thinking of the movies in the park, we have the lake park, having something like that in the winter for the kids somewhere to go, and I was hoping this year we could have that, but it's not quite, quite ready, it's really been a ordeal, really a drowned out ordeal, and so I hate it even going in there, it just gets you upset how slow the progress has been.
They built that building from scratch and a lot, under time, to do this.
Yeah.
To put, to do bathrooms.
Well, anybody else from the audience?
I, I just wanna thank Jackie for mentioning the auditorium, it's not gonna be done, because yes, we are, we're in a community with, uh, Roger Chiefer, are working on a concert with, uh, Chenet, a world renowned musician, that was employed in Evlith about nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, in that era, so we're hoping auditorium will be done at that time, and, uh, it'll be in conjunction with the, uh, city band, uh.
Musashi Band.
Yeah, Musashi Band, okay, and that's the last time that they will be giving a concert, in conjunction with schools, we're trying to mesh that together before they break up for the summer, so make sure that in mind, you move guys' fingers crossed, toes crossed, and everything, okay, we can pull it aside, okay, so push, push.
Chief, you have anything else to bring up?
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Nelson yesterday in reference to the railroad tracks on one oh one, um, he is in the process of trying to get that completed this year, um, he's working with the railway, I guess, because they wanna limit the closure of the railway, but he is, uh, working on that as well, um, as Counselor Lilis mentioned, uh, National Night Out tonight, we'll be heading out to West Devlith here shortly, um, and then out to the Veterans Park in Fale Township, uh, Lifelink Helicopter will be landing at six o'clock, hopefully barring no calls and weather, uh, which is looking great, uh, we have hot dogs and hamburgers and chips and pop and juice, um, we have many nice prizes gathered to be raffled up, uh, Mr. Aho has been generous enough to donate several night stays, so, um, there'll be some nice prizes for everybody out there, so, uh, come on out and, um, have some food and fun.
Jerry, you have anything to add?
Uh, just one thing, Mayor, um, I've been receiving a lot of calls this year about the garbage cans getting filled up with recyclable materials, which are cardboard, paper, plastic, tin, um, so we do have a recycling center, and I just wanna put a shout out that we do have a recycling center down at the city garage, and that's open twenty-four hours a day, and also we come around once a month and pick up recyclables on the curb, so if you need a schedule and you're interested in starting to recycle, um, we really wish you would, because it does cost a lot to dump at the, at the county landfill, when we're dumping cardboard and, you know, all this recyclable materials, so if you need a schedule, give us ball at city hall and we'll get you on.
You think we could put those stickers you used to have on there, because a lot of people don't know what you could put on there, no demolition, because, uh, you know, breaking stuff up, throwing in, throwing toilets and that junk in there, maybe people don't know there is, you know, recycling area, because we used to have them on those bins, and I know they pretty wore off.
I know we had some, some things that you're not supposed to put in there, but I mean, it'd be pretty hard to put a whole list, but we did put it in our newsletter also, so hopefully, when those went out with the bills, people will read that and they can see exactly what you can recycle, but we could do something with stickers.
Especially the demolition stuff fills them up, you know?
Yeah, and yard waste, a lot of yard waste, and we take that at the city garage for free, I mean, just bring it down.
Because maybe they, if you put that on it, they'll call, what do I do with this? And somebody can tell them, you know, where to make it.
Right, yeah, yeah, we can try to make something up, and get some stickers made up.
Yeah, because they used to have them on, and they got, you know, wore off through the years, but, because you get new people in town, they don't quite understand, you know, how it works, and.
Exactly, but when you find a washer in there, you know that, that's not usually a, a good thing, but.
Or the mattress leaning up against it.
Yeah, lift the cover, there's a deer head looking at you in there and stuff like that.
But it, it would help the whole neighborhood if you just started recycling a little more.
Rod, you got anything for us tonight?
Uh, nothing else unless you guys have questions about your storm project.
I'll be fair in a storm last night. Okay, nothing washed out, nothing, no other headaches?
No, really not, a big circus after a few games.
What'd we end up with, like two inches of rain last night?
Uh, it was an inch and a half.
Inch and a half, I knew it was lots.
Jackie, do you have anything to add?
Well, I'm the thing.
Doug, anything?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
I'm glad you were here for all these easement things.
Yes.
It would be confusing, I don't have anything to add, Steph, you got anything to bring up? Can you have anyone else from the audience? If not, I will adjourn the meeting. Perfect timing.